In addition to adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act, electronic notice of this remote public meeting as is permitted under NJSA ten four nine point three and was placed on the City of Newark website. Members of the public can make public comments by audio or by audio and video as permitted by the Zoom electronic communication platform. Now, while in this Zoom meeting, press on raise hand on the bottom left corner of the computer screen or mobile device. Raise hand allows participant to notify the host that they would like to speak without interrupting them. If you are calling in, press star nine on your telephone to raise your hand. The Central Planning Board will be mindful of the number of items on the agenda or move as expeditionally as possible to complete the agenda. However, due to the amount of development requiring board review and the complexity of projects, it may not be possible hear every item if the meeting runs later than eleven P M. In the event that the agenda is not completed by eleven tonight, the board will finish hearing the applications that are in the process of listening to, but no new application will be called after that item is complete. Any application that has not been heard by that time will be rescheduled to the earliest available date, which will be announced on the record if possible. The meeting of the Central Planning Board will now come to order, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Bias? We have his absent. Commissioner Purdy? We have his absent. Commissioner Timmons? Commissioner Timmons? Maybe frozen, I'll come back to him. Commissioner Scott Rowntree? We have his absent. Commissioner Disova? We have Commissioner Disova as president. Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Commissioner Austin?
Here.
And I circle back to Commissioner Timmons?
Yes, I'm here.
Co-Chair Witcher?
Here.
Chair Richardson?
Here.
We have a quorum chair.
Excellent. Let's move to item number one on the agenda, which is C P B twenty one dash thirty two, one forty dash one sixty six Raymond Boulevard. Mister Webster.
Good evening, board members. How are you this evening?
Good.
Um, my name is Eldar Webster. Uh, I'm an attorney at Tom Foley located at one eighty five Raymond Boulevard in Newark, New Jersey, on behalf of Centerpoint Raymond Urban Renewal LLC. Uh, on its request for extension of the board's approval of preliminary and final site plan approval with C variances and deviations for a project to be located at one forty uh, one sixty six Raymond Boulevard, uh, block five zero zero two lots two, I'm sorry, lots three, five, uh, fourteen and sixteen. In accordance with the terms of the redevelopment agreement, uh, with the City of Newark, uh, Centerpoint has applied to this board for preliminary and final, uh, site plan approval. Just get mine, just make sure I got this. It's dropped approximately a hundred and eighty thousand five hundred square foot warehouse building with office space on the property. Uh, this board granted approval, um, in July twenty six, two thousand and one and was moralized, uh, by resolution dated August sixteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty one. The property is located in the I three heavy industrial zone at the time of the approval and remains within the I three zone. Centerpoint now applies for an extension of its approval for a period of ten years pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty five D dash fifty two E, which authorizes the board the right to extend the final approval beyond the statutory extension period the sole with in their sole and reasonable discretion. For the record, um, notice of this hearing has been given pursuant to NJ forty fifty five D dash twelve and in accordance with the city zoning code. Notice was published in the Star Ledger, the newspaper of general circulation of the City of Newark on Jan- January third, two thousand and twenty four. Notice was also provided via certified return receipt to all property owners within two hundred feet of the property and notice was posted on the sign, uh, for the property. Um, as you know, uh, typically, uh, extensions aren't prop- don't need to be noticed, but because of what we're trying to do here tonight, uh, we thought that, um, notice would be appropriate. Uh, we are on receipt of a letter dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, while the applicant, um, sorry, New Jersey Trans- New Jersey Turnpike Authority letter dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. While the applicant makes no objections, uh, to the conditions set forth in the letter, we note that as part of the resolution compliance, Centerpoint has already been in contact and working with New Jersey Turnpike Authority for a sign off on the project. The Turnpike Authority has provided a comment letter to Centerpoint on November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four with respect to the project and Centerpoint responded on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. Again, as part of compliance, Centerpoint will obtain the necessary permit, uh, from the New Jersey Turnpike Authority. Uh, the request for extension, although unusual, um, NJSA forty fifty five D dash fifty two E states that in cases of a site plan for a development consisting of not less than a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, we're at a hundred and uh, eighty something thousand, a hundred and, uh, eighty thousand five hundred, so substantially larger than the the statutory requirement of non-residential floor area, the developer may apply for and the planning board may grant an extension of s- final site plan approval for such additional time period as to be determined by the planning board, uh, taking into consideration um, non-residential floor area under final approval, non-residential floor area remaining to be developed, economic conditions and the comprehensiveness of development. Um, in the instant matter, uh, such extension is appropriate for the following reasons. The size of proposed development of the property includes non-residential floor area more than a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. No development has occurred in the property and cannot yet be developed for the contemplated use under the redevelopment agreement with the city due to reasons I'll discuss in a moment. Uh, the economic conditions associated with constructing the project are substantial due to an ongoing environmental remediation. I'll address that in a moment too. And given the size of the project and extent of the environmental remediation, absent the requested extension, the construction of the project will not be possible. At the time of the approval, the property is being remediated by members of the Bayonne Barrel and Drum Site Potential Responsible Party Group, we call it the P R P group, under the oversight of a licensed site remediation professional. The P R P group has conducted extensive remediation, about fifty million dollars worth of removal of contaminated soil. They've removed large quantities of contaminated soil construct, um, and construction of a low permeable cap access to the entire site. Following the construction of the cap, the P R P group submitted a soil remediation action permit, we call that a wrap. Application of the neighboring property owned by the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, the Soil Wrap application for the property and the application for the NJ D E P for approval of groundwater remedial action permit. Uh, thereafter, the D E P issued notices of technical deficiency for the property, the New Jersey Turnpike Authority applications and groundwater wrap applications for the property requiring significant additional investigation of several areas of the property due to the presence of substances that substances that have been newly classified by the D E P as contaminants. Several unexpected issues raised by NJ D E P are the result of recent focus on contaminants that were not concerns of low permeable cap soil cap as designed and installed, including P F O S camp, uh, compounds, commonly referred to as forever chemicals and one, um, and four, dioxin. Additional investigation requirements for those constituents, um, constant, um, additional requirements for those, um, constituents, as well as petroleum compounds beneath the cap property are set forth in approximately a thirty page groundwater wrap and N O T D, we provided that to you guys. None of those requirements set forth were anticipated by the P R P's group, L S R P, and certainly not by the applicant. It's anticipated based upon the requirements of the D E P that this investigation will continue for several years, at least eight quarters, delaying the construction of the project. Um, the project is also landlocked. Um, its only vehicular access point consists of parcels currently owned by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. At the time of the approval, the NJ D O T property was under contract to be transferred uh, for the purposes of providing public access to the City of Newark. The City of Newark would then transfer it to us as part of our redeveloper agreement. The parties remain under contract, however, despite ongoing efforts to transfer, the D O T is not conveyed title to its parcels. The process is lengthy, costly, and requires approvals from several state agencies. Uh, for these reasons, the permit as permitted under NJS forty fifty five D fifty two E, Centerpoint requests the grant of an extension of its approval for a period of ten years, which the applicant believes will ensure the ample time to resolve all outstanding items and allow the applicant to complete the development of the project as contemplated under the redeveloper agreement. Quite simply, the city owns the property. Um, we're working with, um, a third party group, um, who's responsible for the contamination to remediate the property. Although we obtained site plan and thought we'd be well in the ground by now, Centerpoint, as you know, owns five or six properties in town and has developed them all. Um, we can't get on the property, we can't build on a property until the D E P, um, signs off and the city sells us the property. We don't anticipate that happening, at least, uh, we don't anticipate getting a clean bill of health from the D E P for at least two years, uh, and at that point, just the way everything works with the city, it's probably another year or so in the best case scenario for us to do resolution compliance and begin construction. Um, so obviously, we've invested a lot in the property, we've been working on it for probably the better part of five years, six years at this point. And, um, we're asking for a development window, uh, that would allow us to, um, simply remediate the property and, um, and build on it at some point. Uh, again, we're not in control of the remediation, um, there's a third party group, um, the city is really still the owner of the property. Uh, the land, the access road to get into the property will be transferred to the from the state to the city, which hasn't happened yet. So all these things are still kind of operating in the background. Um, again, we thought that we'd be ready to build, um, but we, um, can't control the, uh, D E P's, uh, new, uh, requirements to, um, to ask for, uh, P F O S remediation, which is really, uh, a groundwater monitoring process that takes several quarters, at least eight quarters, uh, to of repeat of reporting to ensure that the situation is not becoming worse and that the water is not migrating, uh, from our property to other properties and just identifying where the P F O S is coming from. So it's a pretty extensive process. Um, we believe that, you know, we're working with the city hand in hand, um, to, um, to develop this property, it's a large property, we said a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of, uh, a warehouse and another couple of acres of of truck parking. It's something that everybody agrees is a great idea. Um, we really can't do anything else with the property considering the environmental condition. Um, so we're asking, um, with this board, um, utilize its discretion, it's granted under the statute to give us a longer period, I know that is typical, um, but I believe in this instant, um, the facts, uh, warrant uh, this kind of extension request. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Webster. Board?
Chairman, I'm present, just for the record, Chairman.
I was about to say that.
And Commissioner Scott Rowntree is also as well. Thank you, Mister Bias. Um, board, any questions or comments about this extension?
I have a question.
Co-Chair Witcher?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mister Webster, so within it's those ten years, we're hoping to have the remediation done?
Yes, uh, this property is basically being has been is under the process of remediation probably for the last twenty years, it's a very contaminated site, it's one of the worst in town. And, um, like I said, they spent about fifty million dollars remediating it, removing all the dioxin. Uh, but, um, as a result of some new regulations, uh, it didn't pass muster. Um, but I think what's important for the board to know is that our R D A with the city states that, uh, we have to essentially start construction, um, within, um, nine months of receiving the property, so if everything clears up and, uh, we're able to get the environmental clearances, um, then, you know, as soon as the property is transferred to us, we'll start construction. But just basically looking at kind of the history of the, um, remediation, um, and kind of what's anticipated with respect to P F O S and the monitoring, um, we're kind of at the front end of this, we're one of the kind of test cases, if you will, with the D E P and P F O S monitoring. So we just don't know, um, once the tests are all done, uh, we don't actually know what's going to be further required from us. So it just is very difficult for us to kind of proceed and obviously, um, we spent a lot of time and energy and took quite honest money to, um, get the property approved and and we'd like to maintain those approvals. We'd still like to build, um, what we asked for and the board has granted in the past. So we're kind of in a rock and a hard space, um, and we're on the outside looking in, we don't own the property, the city does. Um, we don't own the access road, the state does, hopefully the city will own it this year, hopefully at some point. Uh, but we do know that we have several years of testing and then some potential additional remediation to be done on the property once, um, once the reports come in and they identify what needs to be done to remediate the property. And this property has been has been has been remediated. I want to say, um, the early two thousands, uh, nineteen ninety six, I think, is when the current property owners took over and started the remediation process. So ninety six, it's almost thirty years, it'll be thirty years and two years, they've been working on this property, remediating it. Um, and we are where we are, um, but obviously, you know, we'd like to maintain our position and we're hoping that although unusual, um, this length, uh, request, um, considering all the facts, we don't think it's, we don't think it's outrageous. And so the board understands that the project will commence as soon as it's transferred, uh, because we do have a redevelopment agreement with the city that requires timelines for the redevelopment once the processes, once the property is transferred. So it's not just a blank ticket, if you will.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, this is, uh, this is Dan Beck, Board Counsel, um, having listened to, uh, the applicant's argument, it, uh, it does, uh, jive with the the existing statute. And in light of the fact that the city is the owner of the property and nobody from the city is here objecting to this, um, based upon the economic conditions and the environmental issues, uh, although it is typically outside of the time periods, this is a unique case as outlined by counsel. Uh, my legal opinion is such that, uh, it would not be, uh, outside of, uh, uh, of the board's powers.
Thank you, Mister Beck. Board, any other questions or comments? Concerns? Hearing now, any questions or comments from the public?
Being none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
Motion to approve a ten year extension on this application.
That connect? Moved by Co-Chair Witcher, seconded by Commissioner Bias, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Disova?
Yeah.
Commissioner Timmons? I'll come back to Commissioner Timmons, Commissioner Bias?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Rowntree?
Think she left.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Timmons?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Co-Chair Witcher?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes, your ten years have been approved, don't come back for eleventh year.
Hope, I hope, at least hope it's not me.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys, have a great night.
Madam Secretary, Purdy, uh, Commissioner Purdy is trying to get in. You sent him the
I did.
Information, is he in? Okay.
No, he's not, he's not, I sent it to him though.
Okay, perfect. All right. Let's go to C B B twenty four dash eighty one, which is Mister Velozi.
You can be joining us now.
Good evening, everyone, Nwamey Velozi on behalf of the applicant, um, Marlene DeCunha for the property located at Five Gothard Street, it's application, C B B twenty four dash eighty one. I do see Mister Gennaro, I am looking for my
engineer, yes. Mister Manilio, is there anyone else, Mister Velozi?
That's it.
Okay.
We got him. If we can have Mister Gennaro sworn in, Mister Gennaro, please turn on your camera.
Madam Secretary, um, member Rowntree wanted to be counted as a yes for the last
Okay.
For the first agenda item, thank you.
Mister Velozi, we're okay?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Is your engineer here? Yes, he is. Mister Manilio is here.
Okay.
Mister Manilio, please turn on your mic, there we go. Mister Manilio, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give, um, uh, uh, give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Sure, our name is, uh, legal name is Giovanni, G I O V A N N I, last name Manilio, M A N I L I O, and I'm the civil engineer on the project.
All right, uh, Mister Manilio, um, you reviewed the engineer's report on this matter, correct?
Uh, correct, yes.
And there was
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Oh, oh, you, is your license current, sir, I know you've been here several times, but is your license current and in good standing?
Yes, my license is current and in good standing.
You're accepted by the board, now you may contend.
Thank you.
Charlie, Mister Chairman.
It's okay.
Uh, Mister, uh, Manilio, if you could, um, tell us the one issue we have with the engineering report.
Yeah, so the only, uh, item that we can comply with is the, um, making the existing sidewalk ADA accessible. Um, just given the constraints that are out there with the existing curb and the existing stairs and existing house, uh, there's no way to feasibly, uh, make the, uh, sidewalk two percent along the whole way. Um, I did look at the federal code for public right of way accessibility guidelines and there is a, a, a note in there says that where existing physical constraints make compliance with the requirements in feasible, uh, compliance with these requirements is required to maximum extent, uh, feasible, and that's what we're planning to do, we'll, we'll do our best to make it as compliant as possible, but uh, there's no way to make it fully compliant with the ADA guidelines.
And thank you, if you could, uh, take us to your presentation?
Um, sure. There's really not much to my presentation, but, uh, we'll go through it real quick and share my screen. Please let me know if you can see my screen or when you can.
Not there yet, there we go.
Okay. No, I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're doing Five, uh, Goddard first, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so the, the, uh, project is Five Goddard, it's an existing, uh, three story, two fa- uh, two family dwelling, um, located on Garder Street, uh, property is approximately twenty five feet by a hundred feet, uh, twenty five hundred square feet in lot area, uh, there are three pre- or several pre-existing non-conformities, uh, one being the rear yard of twenty feet is existing, where thirty feet is is required. I do want to note that this was, um, in front of the board, I believe about ten years ago, um, and was approved for the two family and what's shown on the screen here right now. Um, at that time, the rear yard requirement was twenty feet, so at that point, it was conforming, but with the new regulations, uh, the rear yard is not compliant. Uh, second is building lot coverage, fifty five percent is permitted, uh, the existing, uh, building coverage is sixty four point three percent. Uh, impervious lot coverage, seventy percent is permitted, uh, the existing, um, lot is ninety nine point three percent. Um, for non-street frontage, um, there is a requirement for transparency of ten percent, uh, where five point eight percent is, uh, currently present and that will what was granted by the board as a variance, uh, back in, I believe in two thousand and thirteen as well. Um, onsite trees, um, we don't show any onsite trees, uh, there's really no room for a tree, given the, uh, building and the impervious, um, coverage that's on the lot. Um, so I, I should note that we are asking for relief on that as well, um, if the board is, uh, okay with it, I, I think the applicant is willing to pay into the, the tree fund. Um, even if there was a tree planted in, in the rear, um, you can see there's an existing dwelling adjacent to it, um, which would, uh, interfere with the tree or the, um, livelihood of the tree as far as being able to grow and and sustain, uh, life. Um, as far as sites, there is no, uh, changes to the site itself, we are proposing some interior renovations, uh, to convert it from a two family to a three family. All the existing utilities are in place, there is the, the buildings, uh, sprinkler, uh, there's an existing, uh, A C in the back. Uh, so there are no other, uh, utilities that are being proposed as part of the application or any other site improvements at this time.
Thank you, Mister Manilio.
You're welcome.
Mister Chairman, I don't have any other questions for Mister Manilio.
Chair, you muted.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Chair, uh, Mister Trafficante?
Yes, sir.
More is yours. Let's get him sworn in, Mister Beck.
Good evening, Mister Trafficante, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Just, just state your name and your affiliation, thank you.
My name is Charles Trafficaty, I am a principal engineer and a professional engineer. I am the employment of the City of Newark Department of Engineering. My license is active and in good standing with State Board.
Thanks, sir.
Mister Manilio, regarding your request to waive the item regarding sidewalks in the public right of way, I know you researched it, but what's to prevent you from making at least a five foot section of that sidewalk compliant with ADA requirements by reporing it to a two percent cross slope and then making up the difference between the edge and the back of the curb? Either one or two things, either have your client remove the old sidewalk that's a filler strip between the curb and the five foot wide sidewalk and filled with grass, or if they want to put concrete back and don't want to cut grass, just make sure it's the piece between the driveway open and the tree pit where no one really is supposed to walk. What is preventing your client from doing that?
Uh, yeah, Mister Trafficant, there's nothing for providing us to get, like I said, we'll do it to maximum extent practical, so we can do the two percent for a section, uh, but the whole right of way cannot be two percent is is what I was trying to get at.
I get, I, I understand that, that's why I offered or suggest a grass strip. Just means your client would have to cut the grass in the summer and water it and fertilize it, maybe a three foot wide by ten foot wide section.
Or like I said, like you said, from the tree pit, it on, it could be a, a steeper slope, it doesn't have to comply with the ADA requirements.
Right, it would be a grass strip where no one walks.
Or concrete.
Yeah, it'd be concrete, but ideally, grass strip discourages anyone from walking there, so, you know, and as long as you give us at least a five foot wide sidewalk, which is a city requirement or complete streets, I don't see a reason why these sidewalks cannot be reported to meet ADA requirements and thereby satisfy federal law, right, ADA is federal?
All right, yep, ADA is federal, yeah, so, I, again, we have no, uh, no issues with providing a, a minimum of five feet of at two percent. Um, and it might be there already, we don't have enough information to tell you yes or no, we only have, uh, the top curve and add at the right of way line. But yes, we will provide a minimum of five feet at two percent.
And all that information for existing grades and spot elevations can be generated by your lands surveyor, correct?
That is correct, yep.
All right, so based on the revised updated survey, you can determination can be made at time of compliance to see how you can go, your client can go about recasting this existing sidewalk in the public right, right of way to meet ADA requirements, fair to say?
We will meet, uh, two percent at five feet at the minimum, and if we could do better, we'll do better, but that's, that's what we could promise at this point.
Right, but, and so as a result, you can comply with that comment then?
For five feet, correct.
All right, for at least five feet, and if more we will, all right.
Yep.
No further questions, anything else, though, you can comply with, correct, in the report?
Uh, yeah, with, with the exception of the, the one tree that we're asking for relief on as well for the onsite tree, but other than that, yes.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, all right, just for the record. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Listen, you can stop sharing your screen now.
Uh, Chair, I, I need the screen.
Okay, um, Commissioner Jay.
Thank you. Wh- where's your existing uh, trash storage room?
Uh, I believe it's in, inside the, the building right now.
Okay, got you, okay. All right, and you don't have, okay, so that's for your next witness.
Yeah, and the next witness could talk about that too. I, I believe the planner did have a, a slight comment on that.
Got it, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Uh, Chair, I have a question.
Coach Chair, with you.
Thank you. Mr. Manilio, can you show us, or maybe another witness can show us what the front of that property is looking like now? Because I'm wondering about um, the curb cut.
Um, yeah, I, I don't, I mean, the only thing I could share with you is the Google Street View, um, but I don't know if I could enter that into uh, in, as an exhibit. I'm sure the architect has an elevation that he could show.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, I, I, this is John Barry, board planner. I do have a photograph of the site. Um, if we'd like to share that to answer the vice chair's question.
Yeah, and, and let's get you sworn in, Mr. Beck. Let's get Mr. Barry sworn in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barry, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Briefly, your name and your affiliation.
Yep, John Barry, consulting planner for the board. Um.
Yeah, I might have.
Mr. Manilio, opening it up?
Yep, I'll open it for you.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, so th- these are photographs, or there's a, a photograph of both this application and the uh, attached building that'll be the subject to the next application. That's what they look like today.
Yeah, so this, this one, can you see my screen on the right is five Goddard.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you, John.
Yep.
No questions for, any other questions for the engineer? Let's get the next witness.
If we can have Mr. Gennaro sworn in, please? Good evening, Mr. Gennaro. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Good evening. Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Jose Gennaro, G E N N A R O. I'm at one ninety-three New York Avenue in Newark, New Jersey. And I'm a registered architect and planner of state of New Jersey. And both of my uh, licenses are current.
And you've been here many times and you are accepted by the board. Please continue.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gennaro, can you take us through your plans, please?
Uh, yes, sure. Um. Okay. Does everybody see that? Did I do it?
No.
No? All right, here we go. Ada? I'm not seeing it there. Share.
Which one?
Okay. That, that's the uh.
That's that one?
No. Should I take it out? Oh.
Say okay. About to share. Which one is your point?
This one here.
Share. There you go.
Okay, everybody can see it now?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so this is uh, sheet P two of three submitted to you. Um, it's dated uh, November twenty, two thousand twenty-four. And what it does is shows the existing conditions uh, that were approved back in two thousand fourteen. It's a, a three-story, two-family dwelling, um, attached. Uh, there's an identical unit uh, on the left side. This is where on the right side on number five, uh, Goddard. Um, so it's typically, it's basically two apartments that are identical, the third and the second floor. They have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a laundry room. Uh, what happens with the um, on the first floor, we have a two-car garage. We have a utility room. We had a storage room, family room, uh, an additional bedroom, and a full bath. Uh, and then we have a stair connecting, which is a requirement for the, that connects, an interior stair connects the first and the second floor. Uh, so it's all one unit. First and second is connected. So, uh, the changes that we are pro- um, uh, requesting is just on the first floor, the rear part behind the garage. Uh, everything else stays exactly the way it is. Uh, so I guess I will um, take you now to the uh, proposed. I'm sorry about this. Two. All right, I see it's here. That's the one I got. P two. P three now on. So let's just hit that. Okay. All right, so this is uh, sheet P three of three. Uh, and you, we're just looking at the first floor. The, what we're doing to convert it to a unit, it said uh, a kitchen counter with the appliances and a kitchen sink. We're removing the stair that connects the um, the first and second floor. And we're turning the, what was the storage room into a laundry room with a tankless water heater and a sink. And that is all that it's required as far as the interior to be able to have the third unit, the one-bedroom unit. The exterior remains the same. Nothing uh, uh, nothing changes on, on the site itself.
Mr. Gennaro, before Mr.
Yes.
Uh, before Mr. James asks us about where the uh, garbage storage is, could you point it out for everyone, please?
Yeah, right now, it, there is the, it's under the front steps. There's uh, uh, two cans and they are under the front steps.
And how are we uh, going to extend that to uh, incorporate for the third?
We will have to find the uh, some other space in the rear of the property, in the backyard. Uh, whether it would just, we haven't gotten to the details, but it could be, there'd be an enclosure. Um, we can buy a, a container and we put the uh, the uh, uh, additional cans in there.
Thank you, Mr. Gennaro.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions of Mr. Gennaro.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments for the office?
Chair, I have a question.
Coach Chair, which?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gennaro, can you show us the um, exits for the occupants of that ground floor apartment?
It's on the uh, hallway, on the, on the alleyway, on the right side of uh, the, on the side. Uh, I, I have an arrow pointing into it. That's the entrance. And I als- I should also say that this building is um, uh, spr- fully spr- suppressed.
So it's sprinkler?
Yes, it has sprinklers, yes.
So it's just one entrance and one exit?
Uh, yes, and that's all that we are requiring in this case by code.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here or not, any questions or comments? Does that complete your presentation?
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In that case, only questions or comments from the public, Madam Secretary.
Seeing none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
Yes, I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner James.
Seconded.
Seconded by Coach Chair, which, roll call Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Baez? Okay, we'll come back. Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Simmons? You went on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Coming back to Commissioner Baez? Yeah, my team's absent. Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Coach Chair, which?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes. The application has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to fifty-one dash fifty-five. S- let's move to CPB twenty-four dash eighty-five, which is fifty-one dash fifty-five Cypress Street.
Chair Richardson, we skipped one.
Skip one, didn't I?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So we're going to CPB twenty-four dash eighty-three, which is seven Gothard Street.
Correct. On- once again, good evening, everyone. Uh, Noemu Valuzzi on behalf of the applicant. Um, for a property located at seven Gothard Street, which is the exact mirror image of the first application. If we can have Mr. Gennaro sworn in once again. Good evening, Mr. Gennaro. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Once again, just your name and affiliation.
Jose Gennaro, G E N N A R O. I'm at one ninety-three New York Avenue in Newark, New Jersey, and I'm a registered architect and planner of state of New Jersey. And uh, both of my licenses are current.
Yes, sir. Please continue.
Mr. Gennaro, if you could take us through the plans on this application to um, show what we're doing.
Okay, um.
Mr. Valuzzi, go ahead.
All right.
That was calm. Minimize, minimize. Okay, Chair screen.
Oh, sure, okay.
Okay, which one is it?
It, it's the P two again of three, but it's for four point oh two. I don't, it's not here.
Did you re-mail it?
It's on, it's on here. It's underneath here.
Where is it?
It's, it's this one here. Uh.
We need to send someone to help the two of you? Mr. Valuzzi, do we need to come back? Oh, okay, I think we got some action. Getting closer. Yeah, uh, my Chair? Mr. Baez?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had a difficulty with my uh, server, so uh, I just want to say my vote was yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. No worries.
Mr. Gennaro, you're on mute.
Okay, I'm, I'm back, yep. All right, so um, what I have here is the sheet P three of three. Uh, which is again, is the uh, proposed changes on the ground floor. Uh, very similar, the same thing as the other side. Uh, we uh, eliminating the stair that connects the first and the second floor, we adding the kitchen. Uh, the bathroom, full bathroom is already existing, and so is the bedroom, which is actually, I didn't say before, but it's twelve by fourteen approximately. Uh, and then we turning the storage room into um, a laundry room with a tankless water heater and a laundry sink. And that, that is the change, and we will be coming in from the right side of the building. There's a, there's a door coming into the unit.
And Mr. Gennaro, what are we doing for the garbage on this one?
Uh, the same, similar condition. We'll, we'll add the additional whatever is required in the back uh, the backyard of the building.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions for Mr. Gennaro.
Board, any questions or comments? Here and now, next witness.
If we can have Mr. Manilio sworn in? Good evening, Mr. Manilio. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Once again, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Sure, our name is Giovanni Manilio, uh, president of Mantaro Design, uh, civil engineer on the project.
Please continue, sir.
Mr. Manilio, as to the engineering report, we have the uh, same issue as before?
Uh, same, same issue as the previous application. Um, we will work with uh, Mr. Trafficante's office and do our best to uh, make the sidewalk conforming with the ADA requirements.
Okay, um, are we able to put a tree on this one?
Uh, yes, I believe we do have room for a tree in the backyard on this one.
Okay, and we'll work with the arborist to put in the right kind of tree, correct?
Correct, and if the arborist decides that there's not enough room, we'll make a contribution as well.
All right, if you could take us through your presentation?
Uh, sure, I'll keep it short and sweet. Uh, it's very similar to the previous application. Uh, lots twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, existing three-story, two-family dwelling is present. Uh, several pre-existing non-conformities, uh, rear yard of twenty feet where thirty feet is required. Um, again, that was uh, in compliance with the zoning regulations when this was built in about ten years ago. Uh, building coverage of sixty-four point three percent uh, versus fifty-five percent required. Uh, impervious coverage of ninety-nine point six percent where seventy percent is required. Um, a non-street uh, transparency of five point eight percent is present where ten percent is required. Again, that was a variance that was granted by the board approximately ten years ago. And we spoke about the onsite trees um, and compliance with that. Um, and that concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Manilio. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Commissioner, any questions or comments on this application? Here or not, any questions or comments from the public?
Seeing none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion. Move it. Moved by Commissioner Baez. Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Jordan. Roll call Madam, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner Baez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Coach Chair, which?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes, application has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay.
Let's move to CPB twenty-four dash eighty-five, which is fifty-one dash fifty-five Cypress Street. Miss Correlo Perez?
Everyone should be joining.
Here we are. Good evening.
Good evening. Flow is yours.
Sure, um, just for Mr. Madam Secretary, just to make sure our professionals are on. Sure, um, just for Mr. Madam Secretary, just to make sure our professionals are on Adnan Khan and Daniel Roma.
Yes, with their own.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Again, uh, good evening, everyone. Jennifer Correlo Perez of Conwell Foley on behalf of Level Six One X LLC for the project of fifty-one dash fifty-five Cypress Street. Um, they are the owner and designated redeceiver of the property that's located in the C one zone. Um, this um, applicant's owner is the um, a participant in a contract with the city of Newark, an RDA that was executed last year. Um, part of the RDA and stipulated in the RDA, if I clarify, is that they are agreed to not only purchase the property, which they had, but also to construct three two-family dwellings on that property. Um, so we are before you this evening on an application for a minor, for a subdivision uh, to subdivide the existing lot, Lot sixty-one, into three separate tax lots. Proposed lots sixty-one oh one, sixty-one oh two, and sixty-one oh three. And um, we are also seeking variance relief in addition to that subdivision approval, which is a major subdivision approval. Uh, seeking variance relief for the construction of three two-family dwellings with an attached two-car garage on each newly created lot. So that'll be a total of six residential units with parking. As part of that approval, um, we're seeking uh, the variance relief for exceeding the maximum permitted impervious lot coverage. Um, illumination levels and some lot coverage with respect to uh, the building coverage as well. So not only lot coverage, building lot coverage and some illumination levels, and um, that is scattered between the three properties themselves. So on sixty-one oh one, for example, it is maximum in permitted impervious lot coverage and illumination levels. On Lot oh two is impervious lot coverage and the illumination levels. And Lot three, we have rear yard setback, maximum building lot coverage, impervious lot coverage, as well as the illumination levels. Uh, we have two witnesses this evening. We have Mr. Adnan Khan, who's our professional engineer from AWZ Engineering, who's going to be providing you with testimony as it relates to some of this proposed site improvements and the subdivision itself, and Daniel Roma, who's our project architect. We also have a representative from Level Six X, if uh, Mr. Corey Winston, should there be questions that arise for him to present this evening. Uh, we've received the two reports from the city. Uh, the city planners' report dated January seventh, as well as the subdivision review report dated January eighth, and our professionals will stipulate during their testimony that the applicant um, will comply and provide clarification to those questions that were raised throughout their reports. Um, so I am going to ask if we can have Mr. Khan sworn in, please.
Yes, one second. My.
I'm right here.
Yes, good evening. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to uh, begin is truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Adnan Khan. I'm the project engineer from AWZ Engineering.
Thank you.
Your license current and good standing?
Yes, Chairman.
You accepted by the board. Please continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Khan, you prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
Your, your office prepared a subdivision that we're going to be presenting this evening?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Um, I see you started the share screen. Um, the plans that you are going to upload now, those are the plans that were submitted as part of the application. There's really no deviation from what was submitted, correct?
That is correct.
Alright, so I will mark these. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Khan, if you can, please provide the board with an overview of the existing conditions.
Uh, sure. Um, as you heard, like, it's a one lot, single lot. It's an odd-shaped lot. Uh, it is a rectangular for the most part of it, except there is an elevate. Uh, most of the lot is uh, fronting on Cypress Street, but this is approximately ten-foot-wide elevator that uh, fronts on Fabian Place. So it's an odd-shaped lot, uh, which has uh, uh, some asphalt, some concrete pads, and things of that nature, which of course, because uh, due to this proposed project, is going to be removed and uh, taken out. Uh, there are some existing trees along the western uh, property line that needs to be taken out, which we are proposing to uh, to be removed. However, there is a trees to the north east and the north section, and of course, the western property line that will remain. So we're trying, we are, we will, we are trying to preserve as many trees as possible that will be not affected or will be away from the actual uh, construction. Uh, the proposal here, uh, as you heard.
Mr. Khan, if I can just clarify, it's an existing vacant lot, correct?
That is correct.
Alright, and you noted there's frontage on Cypress, but there is that one lot that extends over to, that one lot does extend over to Fabian Place, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Alright, and then there is an existing chain link fence on the property. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And that's going to be removed, correct?
That is going to be removed, correct.
Okay. Alright, I'm sorry. You can proceed with this.
Okay. Uh, as far, the proposal is, uh, even though like, there's a the proposal is to subdivide the lots into three, uh, two-family residential units each. Uh, the lot to the west is the smallest of the three. And the lot to the right, which is sixty-one, I mean, six point oh one, I believe, will be the largest. Uh, and this elevate strip that is again, um, is just hanging in there will be part of the uh, eastern, easternmost lot. And it will be turned into a green area or a grass area. So in essence, the, the coverages for, I mean, the pervious coverage for Lot uh, six point oh one will include this elevator. We have some uh, variances for lot coverage uh, which uh, transpires only to this lot, which is the westernmost lot because it is the smallest of the three. And uh, uh, and uh, basically, that's the reason that there are some uh, coverages uh, issues or not issues, but coverage variance that we are seeking. Uh, the zoning table actually is on the architecture plan, so I believe Danny will go over the actual numbers. But uh, so again, and as part of this proposal, what we are proposing is uh, two-car garages and uh, two, two-family houses, three bedrooms each. Again, uh, Mr. Roma will go over in detail. Uh, we are proposing shade trees in front of each lot. We are proposing trees in the backyard for each lot. In addition, we are in addition, we are proposing shrubberies in the front along the stair, stairways, as well as uh, the screening shrubs uh, for the AC compressor units.
Great.
So we are complying with uh, in this project, we are complying with the parking requirements. We are complying with the tree requirements. So there are no variances uh, required for those two items.
Great.
Uh, the next sheet is our grading and utility. All the three houses will have new utilities, water, sewer, electric, gas. Everything will be brand new. Uh, since we are increasing impervious coverage uh, on the lots, each lot will have its own dry well system or strong water management system that will again, uh, take all the roof runoff and divert it into each of their separate uh, dry well system. Uh, and again, uh, uh, the typical engineering department and water and sewer department requirements. Uh, the applicant will perform the soil testing to make sure the dry wells will work. And uh, all the other engineering standards, the city standards will be met uh, as part of this uh, project. Uh, there are some comments about the lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, let's see if this is the right plan. Yep, it's coming up. Uh, uh, again, we, we have, and we, uh, uh, the lighting deviations as listed in the planning report are accurate. Uh, we will work, there are, we believe there are some of those lighting variant, deviations or waivers. Uh, we might be able to eliminate as part of our revised uh, or resolution compliance plans. And uh, or at least get the intensities down uh, to the extent that they are not going to be a negative effect on the adjacent properties. However, the light fixtures that we are proposing here are strictly residential-type light fixtures, uh, LED fixtures. Uh, if need to, we can replace some of the wall-mounted light fixtures that we are proposing into a baller type systems so that the lighting levels will be lower uh, around the property uh, lines where we have the sidewalks coming from the back to the front of the houses. So I, I think between uh, the comments and some of the revised engineering, we might be able to alleviate uh, some of the lighting comments and eliminate some of those uh, deviations.
Okay, so we can make the representation that will work to at least come as close as we can to the city compliance and potentially eliminate some of the variances that were identified. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, great.
And uh, believe uh, that's pretty much uh, that I have here.
Can I just do a quick, couple of quick follow-ups? Um, sure, your office prepared the subdivision. Uh, the minimum lot size here, well, the lot size for this property is noted in the report and your plan is approximately nine thousand eight hundred forty-nine square feet, correct?
Uh, correct.
And we are looking to subdivide that into three lots. Um, and the minimum lot size in this zone is uh, twenty-five hundred square feet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so um, each of the lots that is being proposed exceeds that amount with one, the sixty-one point zero one being the largest because of that long extension onto Fabian, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you've reviewed the, the uh, the report from Mr. Joe Fox, the city surveyor, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And we have no issues with respect to making the revisions that were noted in his report or the planner's report with respect to this project, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and you noted setbacks with respect to um, lot coverage, the, the uh, the uh, proposed lot coverage, uh, the impervious lot coverage, the maximum permitted is sixty-five. And um, with respect to the three lots, two of the three are requesting the deviations. Is that your understanding?
That is correct. Lot sixty-one point oh two and sixty-one point oh three. So the middle lot and the western lot.
Correct. And what is, uh, the city uh, ordinance provides at a maximum of sixty-five percent. And in Lot sixty-one oh two, your plans indicate that sixty-eight point four is being proposed, and in Lot sixty-one oh three, sixty-eight point three five percent, um, which in your opinion would be de minimis, correct?
That is correct. And in addition, like, we are proposing strong water management to uh, address that issue of a lot coverage, additional lot coverage.
And we had no issues with respect, as you noted, to parking. Uh, we also do not have any landscaping requirements. Uh, we satisfy, not requirements, any variances, we satisfy that. There's no fence that's being proposed on this site, correct?
That is correct. No fences proposed.
Okay. I have no questions, no additional questions for Mr. Khan.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chair, I have a question.
Sure, co-chair with you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Khan, with regards to that strip that heads out to Fabian, there's going to be no fence. How do we secure that green area so that people aren't walking through there and to that, to the property?
We are not proposing any fence. Uh, however, if uh, the board wishes, we can propose, we can provide a fence. Uh, but again, it is a, uh, it is fronting on Fabian. So which means like, in order to cut that area, we might have to provide a front yard fence uh, facing Fabian uh, road.
Correct.
So, but we want to keep it like, more like green, so that's why we are not proposing any.
Yeah, and so just to add to that if we can, so, Madam Chair, I mean, Commissioner Richard, we don't necessarily have an objection, but that would require a variance, um, because the that the fence would not be permitted in the front, and I can defer to Mr. Barry.
Alright, thank you.
That satisfy your question, co-chair?
It does. I'm just, you know, I wouldn't want people walking across my stuff.
Understood. Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like briefly interject.
Mr. Battle, you're still on the oath, sir.
Still under oath. Good evening, everyone. The uh, addition of a fence in that location might be a good idea. Um, you know, the, the neighborhood has a couple of issues from time to time, so it might be better to secure that strip rather than have it turn into a dumping ground or a nuisance uh, situation. So I would be supportive of a variance for that fence if the board saw that that would be a better alternative.
Uh, what height uh, you would prefer, like, six foot high? Because four feet is still people can throw if the, if the uh, accumulation of uh, trash is an issue or concern. Then I think it should be at least six-foot-high fence, closing that.
Yes, it's a narrow gap, and we're not, we're not talking about a long stretch. I think a six-foot fence. It's, it's approximately a ten-foot gap, Mr. Khan?
Yes, approximately ten feet, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be appropriate if that's what the, the board chooses to do here.
It would take your suggestion, you and co-chair, which is suggestion uh, of putting a fence and allowing the variance for a six-foot fence? To deter from uh, any dumping or any of those kind of stuff.
There's no.
Very good. Since there's no objections, counselor?
Yep, no problem. And I, I believe there was a fence there, so we'll just revisit that. Um, and ensure that we do have the six-foot fence, so there's no objection to that. Um, I'd like to call Mr. Roma, who's our project architect.
Let's get him sworn in, Mr. Bet.
Good evening, Mr. Roma. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation for the record.
My name is Daniel Angel Roma. I'm the licensed architect for Artec Studio LLC, and my license is current.
And you're here every week, so please continue. You're accepted by the board.
Thank you. Mr. Roma, your office prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Can you please provide the board with an overview? Uh, you can present the plans as we submitted.
Okay. Um, if you can see the, the drawings, um, the property is located in a C one district. Um, uh, it's a vacant lot, and what we're proposing is to subdivide the lot into three lots. Um, each lot has a different size, um, uh, because of the shape of this uh, property. Uh, the lot uh, sixty-one point zero one is going to be four thousand five hundred and forty square feet. Sixty-one oh two will be two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine square feet. And sixty-one point zero three will be uh, two thousand six hundred and thirty square feet. All of these sizes are bigger than the minimum required for a new two-family that is twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, let me go to the uh, to the site plan. Uh, on the site plan, uh, we can see uh, the, the three uh, new proposed uh, sorry. The new proposed um, uh, two families, uh, the one uh, to the left, uh, the is for Cypress, uh, number fifty-five. The proposed house will be twenty-one point five feet by a total of sixty-four feet long. Um, the three houses will be similar. Um, let me go to the floor plans. Um, this is uh, the, the first one, um, that uh, will be number fifty-one, uh, fifty-one, uh, Cypress, uh, street. Uh, the, the lot, uh, the, the first floor is twenty-one point six uh, by sixty-four. Uh, we have here to the left, a garage door, getting access to a two-car garage. Um, and um, if we go from the second uh, drawing, uh, we'll see the, the second floor. Uh, we have the main stairs. Uh, as soon as we go up half-way, we have two doors. Uh, one are going to the second floor, one going to the third floor. Uh, the one to the second floor, uh, we have uh, five steps. Uh, as soon as we are on the second floor, we have to the front, a living dining area, a kitchen, uh, a U-shape kitchen. Uh, and then we have a corridor. This corridor goes to the back, and uh, in the back, we have three bedrooms. Uh, the first bedroom is eleven-six by ten-ten, uh, with a walking, with a closet. Uh, the next one is eleven-six by ten-ten, similar with another closet. And to the back, we have the master bedroom. The master bedroom is fifteen feet, two inches by thirteen. And to the back, we have the master bedroom, the master bedroom is fifteen feet, two inches by thirteen-seven. Uh with a full bathroom and a walk-in closet. Also, on the corridor, we have another eh full bathroom. Eh from this corridor, we can go down eh to the first floor. As soon as we are down on the first floor, uh we have eh a laundry room. Eight-four by five-eight and a corridor, on the corridor, we go uh back eh to a recreation area. Uh the recreation area is twenty feet, six inches by twenty-one. And also on on this area, we have a a half a bathroom, a powder room, eh six by five feet. Uh if we go now eh to the third floor, on the third floor. Is uh similar eh to the second floor, um but we have a a bigger eh dining area. Uh to the front, we have a dining area, a living room, eh L-shaped kitchen, uh. Uh with an island. And then uh we have the corridor to the back with the three bedrooms, uh the same size. Uh that I said before, eleven-six by ten-ten, eleven-six by ten-ten, and the master bedroom in the back fifteen-two by eh thirteen-seven. With a full bathroom and a walk-in closet. Also, on this corridor, eh we have the laundry room. Um, now, uh we're going eh to the eh to the elevations. Um, we're going to use basically eh three materials, um the will be. Uh this is the front facade, uh we're using a brick, eh fiber eh. Cement panels, eh white ASIC panels here, uh where we have eh the two sliding doors. Uh that are facing the living area of uh each of the unit. Uh on the bottom, uh we have a brick, the color of the brick is a brown bronze stone. Uh then, uh to the to the left, we have a fiber cement siding by James Hardy. Color khaki brown. Um, um then, if we go. Um, to the left side, uh it's a vinyl siding, uh these uh sides don't have any window. Because it's located on property line. Um, uh then, we have um the the right side. Eh elevation uh with the windows, eh all these comply with the the minimum. Eh glass area requirement.
So Mister Roma, the, one of the comments that was noted in Mister Barry's report was with respect to the transparency levels, so. Um, if you're just going by the facades, the set left elevation, there are no windows because it sits on the property line, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the other, the uh the uh the right side elevation you indicated does meet the minimum standards with respect to transparency, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can see here, uh the windows that we're proposing. For for those sides. Um, eh then, I can go now eh to um sixty-one point eh zero-two. For fifty-three eh C press is exactly the same house. Uh the only thing that we change is the colors, uh the color eh on on this one. Eh the brick uh will be um eh will be brick endicott manganez, color gray. Uh also, we have in the white ASIC uh panels in the front. And uh to the eh to the left, we're uh above uh the main entrance. Uh we have the eh the fiber cement siding color gray slate. Uh or equal, um these are um. The eh and this is eh fifty eh fifty-three C press. And if you, if we go now to the last one eh for eh fifty-five C press. Um, is uh similar eh to fifty-one. Um I have here um the the rendering. How uh these uh three houses will looks like, uh the uh the. The fifty uh fifty-one and fifty-five, the out, the the two outside eh. Buildings uh will be with a eh red brick, uh or brown brick. And uh the one in the middle will be with a gray brick.
And and I will mark this as A one, and we will submit that over to the board secretary.
Yes. And uh and basically, this is what we are presenting tonight.
Thank you. I have no additional questions for Mister Roma.
Thank you, commissioners, questions or comments? Here and now, does that complete your presentation?
It does.
Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Seeing none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
We should move it, raise the project for neighborhood.
Second it. Second by Commissioner Bayes, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Co-chair Witcher? Chair Richardson.
Yes, application been approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Let's move to CPB twenty-four dash one-ten, which is one thirty-five, one forty-nine, dash one fifty-seven. Summit Street, and this is Mister Olivera. And this is a courtesy review.
Yes. Mister Olivera, once you join, can you just let me know who to bring in?
Yes, ma'am, there you go, um there should be. Brian Senick. Andrew Christ. Dale McLean. Jack Elliott and Robert McNamara.
You bring enough guys?
Yeah, Mister Olivera, this is a courtesy review, correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
This is a courtesy review.
This will be a courtesy review, Mister Beck, thank you. I just wanna make sure that everybody's invited in, if I can begin.
Think I only missed the first name you said.
The first name was Brian Senick from Terminal Construction.
There we are.
Are we good?
Yes, everyone's.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, if I may, Michael Olivera with the offices of Chiesa, Shahidi, and Gian Tomasi appearing on behalf of the applicant, Terminal Construction. Uh they are the contractors that will be building this building for New Jersey Institute of Technology, otherwise known as NJIT. This is the property at one thirty-nine and one forty-nine dash one fifty-seven Summit Street. Block three eighty, lots one, six through ten, eighteen and forty-four on the city's tax maps. Uh what we're seeking to do this evening is to demolish the existing eight-story residence hall along with an existing one-story masonry building. And there are some trees, concrete seat walls and pavers that will also be demolished along with a chiller equipment and appurtenances. That will be moved to accommodate the new proposed dwelling, that the new proposed building, I should say. Uh what we're proposing to do is to construct a seventeen-story residence hall to include student housing. And a proposed resident for the school president, along with a two-story adjacent conference center, total square footage of two hundred twenty-one thousand seven square feet. The new building along with the residence hall will encompass the majority of the lot. We are proposing a courtyard and a pedestrian walkway to serve both the new structures and an existing residence hall that is already on this site. And as well as two private parking spaces, and there is additional parking being provided across the street in an existing parking garage. Uh by way of of background, this property is located in an institutional zone. Within the use of the property or which the property is used as a dormitory is considered a permitted use. As Mister Beck stated, this is a courtesy review, uh the state statute says that any institution such as this. Does not have to apply for site plan approval or variances, but they do have to present to the planning board. So that the board can uh review the plans and offer any recommendations that they may see fit. If I may, I'd like to call as my first witness Andrew Christ from NJIT. To give the board an overview of what we're proposing by way of this application.
Good evening, Mister Chris.
Mister Beck.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Andrew Christ, I'm senior vice president for real estate development and capital operations at NJIT. I'm also a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, having appeared before this board before my license is is uh current.
Are you testifying as an engineer?
Uh, no, I'm testifying as the representative of NJIT Chair.
Please proceed.
Thank you, so Mister Chris, if you could please give the board an idea of what we're proposing by way of this application.
Sure, and uh thank you to to the chair and to the board, and happy new year to everyone. Uh we appreciate the opportunity to be back before the board for this courtesy review. Um NJIT's strategic plan outlines outlines how we intend to continue our role as an indispensable partner to the city of Newark. This project will allow us to house more students and residents, allowing them to experience our great city during their university experience. Um the project will remove an existing aging facility that is literally falling apart. Um if you drive on Raymond Boulevard today, uh heading up toward Lock Street. And you look up, you'll see this building has a big curtain on the back of it. Uh the facade of the building is falling off um this facility that was renovated in the early nineteen eighties. And is in need of significant repair and renewal. Um, we uh to to permanently mitigate these issues and concerns, we evaluated whether or not. We should renovate the existing project uh facility or demolish this building and build a new. And we decided that in the best interests uh of of the dollars uh that our students provide for uh residential opportunities to live on our campus. That we would demolish that and create a new uh living environment that was more apartment style. Similar to the Maple Hall project that this board heard um just a few years ago. Um this building will have a hundred and fifty-two units, four hundred and fifty-four beds. Which is an increase from the two hundred and thirty or so beds that the facility has currently. Um it'll be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet and will be seventeen stories. On the top of that of the building, there will be a a penthouse apartment that will uh be available to the president of NJIT for their residence. Um in addition, we're looking at a conference center, which is two interior stories with a roof rooftop deck. Uh that will provide for us an opportunity or uh and the the rendering is being brought up here so you could see what the building looks like. Uh an opportunity to provide um conferences and other meetings and whatnot, in addition to what we already do on the NJIT campus. Um the ground floor of that facility is just about twenty thousand square feet. Um so the the building facade, as you can see, is uh predominantly glass with metal panel. Um it's a beautiful new addition to our campus and really provides an opportunity to frame the south edge of the campus with an iconic building. In addition, we have um NJIT signage, which will be illuminated on the uh north facade, the east facade. Um as as you can see here in the in the rendering. Um so the existing building is eight stories, so this will be a significant difference between that um existing facility and the new. But again, provides an iconic experience for the NJIT students. Um we have received the review letters from engineering, water sewer, and planning, and we will work with those groups to resolve any concerns. That they may have on the project, um at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Chair Richardson, if I may, um.
Sure.
Mister Olivera, if we can mark the rendering as exhibit A one, please?
Sure.
Thank you. That was it, Chair, thank you.
Board, any questions or comments? For this witness?
Eh Mister Chairman, I do have the the project engineer and the project architect here, they and uh available to testify. But I think that Mister Chris has given the board sufficient information, especially in light of the fact that this is a courtesy review as opposed to a full-blown application. But I I'm more than willing to call either one of them if the board, any board member has any questions that Mister Chris hasn't been able to address.
Doesn't seem like any of the board members have any questions.
Chair.
Commissioner James.
Yeah, just one question for Mister Chris, uh what's your timeframe on construction? We expect to uh move to demolish the existing structure this uh June, June first. Uh as soon as the students um vacate for the at at the at the end of the spring semester. Um and then we we expect this new facility to be operational in July of twenty twenty-seven. So it's about a a two-year construction period.
Okay, so so will will it displace any students or any existing staff?
Um it will, and we're actually in uh conversations right now with Rutgers Newark to uh help. Uh house some of the students that will be displaced, we also have some vacancy, not a lot, but some vacancy on the NJIT campus. Uh so we'll obviously disperse as many students as we can within those rooms. Uh we're at a a about a ninety-eight percent occupancy rate now, so so the two percent or so will fill up uh as best we can. And then uh Rutgers is willing to help us out with the facility that they have available. Thank you, it looks like an exciting uh, you know, uh project. Thank you.
I I agree.
I just have a question, Chair Richardson, I'm sorry.
Commissioners De Silva.
Yes, hi, good evening, is there any parking, is there gonna be an additional underground parking or parking deck with this project? Uh it seems that parking is very limited at NJIT, as is, so I was just wondering.
So this project itself does not have any additional parking, however, I will, I will say that you may have seen a recent article. Uh NJIT has leased some space at four ninety-four Broad Street. We're gonna be moving a significant number, almost two hundred of our administrators to that facility, which will free up about. Uh two hundred and uh or so parking spaces every day uh in the parking garage that's directly across the street from this facility. Also, residential students tend to not necessarily bring their vehicles to campus, uh so so that also provides a little bit of relief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board, any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, Chair, just one um final question.
Sure.
Um Mister Chris, just for the purpose of the miniature, the senior VP Real Estate Development for NJIT?
Yes, Senior Vice President, Real Estate Development and Capital Operations.
Thank you.
And licensed engineer.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Or any questions or comments from the public?
The, we have one, Chair.
Okay. Let's get that person sworn in and they'll have three minutes to speak.
Mister Zhang, if you could be sworn in, okay.
So where is the individual?
Mister Zhang is towards the bottom of the street.
Oh, there we go, okay, thank you, good evening, uh do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Sir Zhang, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Miles Zhang and I live on James Street in Newark. Um and I I do, I do I have two minutes?
Three.
Three minutes, okay, yes, I just wanted to say that I really uh like this project, I wanted to speak in favor of it uh really unequivocally here. Um I think it's really important that uh NJIT had become a really full member of New York's community. And I think building this uh residential college allows it to move from being a commuter campus to being a twenty-four-seven campus where the students. Buy from Newark businesses, go to Halsey Street, and that's really, really important. Um for that model of the Rutgers Living Learning Center, I think, to become a a model for what NJIT is doing on on this campus. Um, with regards to this design right here, I just had uh two, two, two small comments. Um, I think that, you know, NJIT has done some demolitions in the past, you know, questionably or not, but I think that this demolition is um. I think really merited, uh because it's clearly an aging building and non-contributing structure to the city and it's. I think really merited uh because it's clearly an aging building and non-contributing structure to the city and it's being replaced with a really high-quality design. Um, but just looking at the um site plans for the design, I had two kind of small comments on the site plans. Um, the first comment I had on the site plan is that the um I see that this building will have from the top floors facing east over downtown Newark, will have some of the best views of probably any campus uh dorm in the nation of New York City skyline of Newark skyline. Um, and so I'd encourage the applicant for the top floors of the dorm beneath the level of the president's penthouse to have um door uh um facilities that the students can access for lounge spaces opposed to just bedrooms on the on the seventeenth floor facing New York City. So common areas on the upper floors for the better views as opposed to the the lower floors of the buildings. Um, the second comment I'd have on the design is um uh it is uh the buildings next door to it, particularly Laurel Hall uh by is built nineteen ninety-seven by the architect Michael Graves. Um, it's not a landmark structure per se, but it's by a really, really important twentieth-century architect who also did the Newark Museum and a lot of other really uh important um landmarks around the country. Um, I think Michael Graves' buildings on NJIT's campus, as well as his constructions for uh the rectory of um Sacred Heart Cathedral, uh Sacred Heart Cathedral in Newark have a very specific color palette of the red, the yellow and the blue and a specific kind of architectural language. So I would encourage um the applicant for this project to think about how their building relates to Laurel Hall next door by Michael Graves in terms of the datum lines for facade elements, in terms of the color palette, in terms of kinds of certain materials on the facade so that their building can really complement what Michael Graves built, because I do believe from the historical record that when Michael Graves built this quad at NJIT, he kind of redecorated the paint scheme for Maple Hall to match Laurel Hall and the new buildings that he was creating, and now that Maple Hall is being demolished. I think that the new building at that location can try to borrow the color palette of Michael Graves or incorporate some of those different kinds of design elements, because there's a lot of um historical precedent for that, such as the um National Gallery of Art in London by um Venturi Scott Brown, as well as all the other buildings that Michael Graves created. So all that's to say is I think this is a great project. I think it should move forward. I hope NJIT has no trouble getting financing for it. Um, but I think with a few tweaks to the design to the uh upper floor, adding lounge spaces on the upper floors as well as uh incorporating the design language of Michael Graves into facade elevations, I think it can become uh an even better project and an enhancement to Newark community. So I think those are my three minutes, and thank you.
Yeah, that's your time. Thank you so much, bud. Thank you for that. Very thoughtful. Madam Secretary, any other persons from the public wishing to speak?
Yes, we have one more, Chair.
Okay.
Will I have to be sworn in or?
Yes, well, I just got a hold of the screen. Thank you. Good evening. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give? She'll be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Ni Oblade Ojova-Otu. And I live at sixty-two Head and Terrace, Newark, New Jersey.
Hey, you have three minutes to speak, sir.
Um, this, this project is 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 very near and dear to me. Um, I'm a graduate of NJIT and I remember the dorm. Um, that is being demolished. Um, when I was there, uh, there was talk about it being demolished because it was such bad shape then and like every year they would redo it and redo it and redo it. So I'm happy to see that there's a comprehensive plan to um provide something more for the current students. Um, I'm in total support of Mr. Uh, Christ. Um, the things that he has done on the campus to energize it and revitalize it is is nothing short of incredible. Um, you know, I I think it's a great project, just like Mrs. Zhang said, um sorely needed. Um, and I I think more residential uh projects like this on campus will help to make um NJIT more integrated into the Newark um environment, so. So I'll have to say and um can't wait to see the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, Mr. on the Chair, if I may, Mr. Ni Oblade, can you just spell your last name before you go?
Uh, ADJ. OGA. Hyphen. OTU.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, any other persons wishing to speak?
Seeing none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
No move, Chair.
Move by Commissioner James.
Second it.
Second by Commissioner Baez. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Jordan? Yes. Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baez?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons? Okay. Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree? Commissioner Scott Roundtree? Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Paul Chair Wycher?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to come off mute.
We got you. Yes, the application has been approved.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Don't go anywhere.
Not going anywhere, Chairman.
Let's go to CPB twenty-four dash eighty, which is four seventeen, that's four twenty-one New Street. And eighteen dash twenty-two First Street. Mr. Oliver.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Michael Olivera with the offices of Ch- Chiesa Shahini and Ajant Tamas, appearing on behalf of the applicant. The New Jersey AIDS Alliance, which is doing business as the North Jersey Research Initiative. We're here this evening seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and variance relief in connection with properties located on New Street and First Street, designated as block eighteen forty, lots sixteen through nineteen on the city's tax maps. What we're proposing here this evening is the construction of a new five-story residential building containing twenty-five units. The one, the units will be restricted for occupancy by members of the LBGTQ community. This is being done as part of a package or a uh an incentive program by the City of Newark. Uh, you'll hear testimony from our representative from NJCRI, Kevin Taylor, that this property was actually or a part of the property was purchased from the City of Newark with the intention of having this building that we're proposing this evening constructed. Um, if I may, I'd like to call Kevin Taylor, who is the representative of NJCRI. I also have the project engineer, Jack Englese, and the project architect Kara Constantino that can give you more information with regard to the building itself.
Sure thing. Let's get your first witness sworn in, Mr. Beck.
Good evening. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give? She'll be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
My name is Kevin E. Taylor. I am the Director of Development, Fundraising and Communications for NJCRI.
Now, is he accept, we can go ahead, right, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, he's not.
He's not an expert, no. So, Mr. Taylor, if if you could please, I I said in my opening statement that this is being done uh at the request over with the consent and the knowledge of the City of Newark. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So if you could, please give us a more of a description as to the interaction between the city and your agency.
Absolutely. At the end of December twenty twenty, the City of Newark put forth an RFP called Making Housing Homes, where they ca- uh uh looked at developers and service providers to consider new and innovative projects for particularly marginalized communities. Uh, NJCRI submitted a uh an app uh proposal and was the uh the top recipient uh of that project and moved forward to uh move the project forward for twenty-four uh twenty-five um permanent supportive housing units. Uh, post-pandemic, the project hit, you know, the bumps, but twenty twenty-four has proven particularly productive for the project in that we were able to acquire lot sixteen, which at the time of our offering was still owned by the city. And now we have secured that. We have worked with the Newark Housing Authority and and acquired twenty-five project-based vouchers and by fortuitous uh timing, have worked with the Newark Essex County COC as a COC builds project has come forward. That has allowed us the opportunity to be able to have some more partnership in the building of this innovative project.
So as as to the the building itself, I I I said in my statement also that this is uh geared towards uh and restricted to the LGBTQ community. Is that correct?
Yes, but we will be working with the county to do uh their process and their process of coordinated entry to ensure that we are looking at members of the community who are also Newark residents.
So it it's it's safe to say that the predominant residents in this in this facility, if it were to be built, are going to be Newark residents or at the very least County of Essex residents?
Absolutely. That is a stipulation in the process, and we will be working with the county to ensure that we are working with that community.
And and this is, this is more of an apartment building than anything else. This is not restricted in any way, shape or form as far as entry and exit. It's it's strictly limited in the sense that it's uh given the affordability or the availability to members of the LBGTQ community. It's not any kind of uh residence hall or uh something that would restrict entry and exit.
Yeah, it's not any kind of residence hall or shelter. It is permanent supportive housing. Uh, that'll be juxtaposed. It is directly across the street from our headquarters, our clinics and our other services, working with the clients um to ensure that they stay in service uh and in in active care, but they will be going to school, working and independently housed in the facility.
And there are no programs that are being offered at the facility itself or at the building itself? If if anything, it would be across the street from where where you have your offices?
Absolutely.
I have nothing further of of the gentleman at this time, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Board, any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I have a question, uh, Chair.
Commissioner Baez?
Uh, just a simple question. Is that building is going to have a community room, though?
I mean, it will have, it will have uh community space because um we want to make sure that that the capacity to do that is available in the room, but it won't be used by anybody other than residents to the building.
Excellent, excellent. And that's all going to be affordable house, I mean? Thank you. No further questions, Chair.
Chair.
Commissioner James?
So what's the criteria? Um, like, how do you select the residents to essentially apply or what's what's that whole process?
So, uh, working with the Essex County Newark Sees, the COC, there's been a, the the coordinated entry process ensures that all the stipulations of uh of um Newark, uh proven residency, housing first is on the list, but also ensuring that they are uh working and have the capacity to follow all the stipulations to make sure that they follow coordinated entry, because we don't want somebody to go, oh, great, new space, I'm coming in from New York. Who's, I'm going to move in from another county. They will already have been in the process of seeking housing through the city and through the county, and then that list becomes more truncated more so, so they've come in as part of the special.
Do you provide this type of housing in other municipalities, or is this the first of its kind and and?
The first of its kind, again, in response to the Making Housing Homes project that came forward a few years ago.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments for Mr. Taylor? Hearing them. Next witness.
Are there any members of the public that might have a question of the uh?
That'll, that'll be at the end.
Okay, thank you. If I may, then I'd like to call the project engineer, Mr. Englese.
Good evening, Mr. Englese. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Yes, my name is John Englese, I-N-G-L-E-S-E. Excuse me, most people call me Jack. Um, I'm a principal in the firm of Englese Architecture and Engineering. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and a licensed professional engineer, and both of those licenses are current. Um, and I'm the engineer on this, on this particular project.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask that Mr. Englese be accepted as an expert in engineering.
Accepted by the board. Please continue.
Thank you. Mr. Englese, if you could, please um give a brief orientation of the existing conditions that exist at this site.
Yes, I'd like to share my screen here. Okay, can everyone see this? Let's see if I can get that out of there.
Not yet. Now we can see it.
You see my, you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Wish I could see it. Okay, there we go. Um. So this uh this project is located at the intersection of First and New Street. Uh, it's eighteen dash twenty-two First Street and then four seventeen dash four twenty-one New Street. Um, it encompasses four tax lots on block eighteen forty, lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Um, it is currently uh vacant land, and this is the existing uh conditions. It's essentially a fenced-in grassy piece of land that has has been vacant. It has probably been vacant since First Street was widened and these properties were shortened and uh uh the existing buildings that were on here were demoed uh some number of years ago. So it's an, it's an existing, uh it's an existing vacant lot. Um, it is a uh an irregular shape. Uh, it's sort of L-shaped with a frontage of seventy uh six feet. Um. No, seventy, seventy-one feet on um on First Street, roughly a fifty-nine-foot frontage on New Street. It goes back a hundred and twenty-five feet in depth at its longest. Um, and there, it sort of wraps around two shorter properties that that are also vacant on First Street. It it's adjacent to um a, an existing two-family home on New Street um that has an alley, and all the properties that surround it, both on First Street and going up New Street, are all also within the C-two um uh commercial district. That's what this property is uh zoned as. Um, what's been proposed here is to construct, um, excuse me, um, to construct a five-story um twenty-five-unit multifamily dwelling. This is essentially an apartment building with a ground floor that also has a a dual-purpose community space and uh social service offices for NJCRI. Um, this is the, this is the, let me see if I can zoom in here, get this a little bit clearer. Um, so this is the site plan. Essentially, the building occupies most of the site. Um, it's main entrance for the residential is on New Street. Um, and then there's a a series of mechanical spaces, a trash room, elevator and a stair, two stairs, laundry laundry space, bike storage, indoor bike storage and outdoor bike storage. Uh, a common space at the rear that has a small outdoor space of yard. Um, an alley on the west side between us and the and the the existing two-family home uh that also provides some bike, outside bike parking. Um, the, the the street frontages are all uh going to be new concrete, brick pavers, shade trees, new concrete curb, um a rebuild of the handicap ramp at the corner. Um, some privacy fence along the west side between us and the neighbor and a six-foot privacy fence at the rear of that little yard. Um, there is a uh entrance to the uh to the sort of commercial slash community space at the ground floor off of First Street. Um, and uh and an and an exit from the 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 fire stair at that level. The um, that's so there is, there's not a great deal of of site development here except for the public right-of-way. Um, there's a a sort of interesting pattern of brick pavers and tree pits on First Street which were uh constructed uh when the first, when First Street was widened. Um, and we're replicating, we're we're saving and rep slash replicating that paving pattern and tree placement. Um, and we've, you know, shared this with the uh the city forester. We do need a variance because this project would require two on-site trees, and there really is no on-site space to do trees of any size. Um, so that's a, that's a variance that we we require. Um, we are doing shade trees at the, at the street frontage. Um, keeping in line with the engineering, there's going to be new utility connections. Um, fire and domestic water services. Um, uh sewer, sanitary sewer and storm sewer connections to the, to the city sewer. Um, no gas is pro- uh projected at this point. New electric service is is, although there's, there's a, there's a potential- there's a potential for gas service to the building, but we're looking at the possibility of doing this. This is all electric. Um the um the storm water system for this building is essentially a green uh a green roof, a blue roof. Um which utilizes the pitch of the of the roof structure and designs the structure of the roof um to accommodate um a shallow pool of water that slowly drains out. So it 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 maintains the design flow rate from the roof and provides the storage necessary to provide that lower flow rate. Um we've done that before in Newark on a on on urban infill projects and and it works very well. Um we've got lighting. Uh that's another sheet, excuse me, here. Um. So as the building occupies most of the site, the lighting of the public right-of-way is done with wall-mounted uh light fixtures to provide the required lighting levels. The privacy fence at the at the west alley and the privacy fence around the rear yard allow us to light those areas without spilling light onto our neighbors by mounting those wall-mounted lights low enough that the six-foot height, six-foot fence cuts cuts that uh illumination off. Um and that's essentially the the gist of the site plan here. I'm gonna turn the architectural uh description of the building over to the project architect, Cara Constantino.
Before we go there, Mr. Inglaze, I just have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
To the variances and your review of the memorandum from these the various city agencies.
Absolutely.
If I recall you correctly and you're during your testimony, you said that this property is located in the C two district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the C two district permits this type of use?
Yes, the C the C two, the C two district permits residential over commercial. Um that's why there are no dwelling units on the ground floor. Um and the NJCRI uh uh social service offices serve the function of that commercial space on the ground floor. Um and uh so it's a it's a permitted permit, it's a permitted principal use. Um the when we had submitted the drawings, um it was our understanding that we needed a variance for um side yard setback because we believe that the property had, because it was a corner property, it had two side yards and two front yards. Um the planners' report um lists a rear yard setback variance as being necessary um for that rear area of twenty feet, so we would be requesting a rear yard variance as well. Um there is uh additional variances required for total impervious coverage as excuse me, as the site has ninety-five percent impervious coverage, that's building and paving as opposed to the eighty-five percent that's uh uh permitted by ordinance. Um I in I mentioned before the in uh the uh not providing the onsite uh the onsite two trees. Um that's a a a a variance um as well. And we have variances listed uh on this on the zoning chart for the transparency which uh Cara Cara will get into a little bit more when she shows the elevations. Um and I believe those are the only variances we're requiring. Um there is no parking provided and and no parking is required in this zone.
And if you're English, i- is the granting of these variants, will will the granting of these variances create any substantial detriment either to the neighborhood or to the overall zoning plan of the city of Newark?
No, I I do not believe so. Um the rear yard setback is is sort of an interpretation. Um the way this corner property functions, um we abut neighbors as sort of a side yard on both sides. Um our neighbor to the west, that's their side yard as well. Um they have a two-foot or a three-foot alley there. Um and the and the uh the properties to the north of us on First Street uh where they abut us would also be their side yard. Um so I think that's a a a variance that's easily granted and and sort of de minimis. Um I think the onsite trees uh are as well a de minus a de minimis variance. Um and we'd certainly be providing shade trees on both on both uh street frontages. Um the transparency, I'm going, I'll leave that a lo- uh to the architect to describe. Um I think in general transparency um is one of those things that um I think it's important if the building has too few windows, but if the building is designed uh but if the building has uh a a good street presence and a good facade design, the numbers don't tell the story um as much as the as the image does, so she can get into that a little bit better. Um we've did receive engineering, uh we did receive comment letters from planning, from engineering and from uh sewer and water. Um the uh the I I will say that the engineering comment letter um was released on the nineteenth. We had done some revisions to the drawings and sent them in on the eighteenth. So they really crossed in passing, so the the we we don't expect engineering to have seen the our changes from the eighteenth and we'll be addressing all of the comments from their latest memo on or their their initial memo on the nineteenth. Um we did have a preliminary meeting with both engineering, planning and with all of engineering, planning and sewer and water uh prior to uh uh filing. And um we had made some revisions based on our uh on our informal meeting. Um but we'll certainly be revising. We've we've reviewed all of those memos. Um we don't take exception to any of engineering's comments and we'll be revising the drawings accordingly and sending them back in for uh engineering compliance. Um as as the same with planning, um we'll be revising the drawings in response to planning's comments. Um and sewer and water, the same. We re- we received their letter uh late last week, actually. Um and mm uh I I would say that all of all of what was in uh and Water and Sewer's comment letter was what we would normally expect. Um there is some discussion about um infrastructure improvements. Um we had a very good conversation at our informal meeting about the state of the s- the state of the water line on New Street. Um we had filed for uh flow tests for the main on New Street and the mains on First Street. And I believe there there's going to be some combination of water services coming into the building. Um potentially from new, potentially from First Street that might uh uh alleviate the need to replace the main on 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 New Street. But that's all uh um that all needs to be discussed further with Water and Sewer when the results come back from the flow tests. But essentially, we're going to come to some understanding with Water and Sewer how to how to best serve the building. So we have, we take no, we take no exception to their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Inglaze. I have nothing further of Mr. Inglaze at this time.
Okay, commissioners, questions or comments? Just stop squirts, uh sharing the screen, please.
Yes.
Mister, uh if if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the project architect, Cara Constantino.
Okay, let's get this morning, Mr. Beck. Mr. Trav contact.
Sir, you're still on the old, sir. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Inglaze.
Good evening.
Um in the engineering report to the planning board dated December nineteenth, there were three items that requested testimony. I don't know if you can answer, but I'm gonna try and ask the questions anyway.
Okay.
All right. On page three of the report, under item four demolition plan, Roman numeral three, applicant shall provide testimony to the board as to how they intend to not disturb adjacent structures when they take to remove all foundations and utilities and construct new foundations for the proposed building and retaining walls along the west common property line. Can you address that with testimony?
Yes, I I I can address that. I can address that specifically now. Um that's one of the reasons why we tried to keep an alley on the west side so that our new building foundations wouldn't be right on the property line next to that existing two-family house. That two-family house has uh is a is a typical Newark two-family house with a ground floor garage level and two floors above. So I suspect that their foundations are probably between three and four feet below grade. Um ours would probably be at the same elevation. Um we're we're, we do not have our soil uh 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 tests back yet for structure. Um but our foundations along the west side would be designed to either be high enough as to not disturb their foundations or they would be done in conjunction with some kind of supportive excavation so that there's no uh uh a damage or undermining uh potential to that existing structure. Um the retaining wall at the rear, um we need, we do need to get additional grades back there because the original survey uh didn't show some existing spot elevations. But in general, that that rear yard um has a fairly low two-foot plus or minus retaining wall just because um we want that terrace at the back to be level with the inside uh slab elevation so that it can be accessible. Uh but yet that might mean that our terrace is uh somewhat lower than the existing property to the west and the existing property to the east. So when we give you the final grading plan, um that's one of the other comments in the in the letter. Um we'll be providing a detail for the uh retaining wall. Um, excuse me, for the retaining wall there and um and 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 addressing whatever um needs to be done with the existing with the adjacent neighbor. All the three sides of that rear yard right now are all someone's rear yard and the two other sides are that vacant uh uh adjacent property that's all lawn right now, so. I don't think it's gonna be uh insurmountable, but we'll need to provide you provide you more information for that.
All right, well, as a condition of approval, would you be willing, should you have to do supportive supports? You know, for excavation, based on your proposed final grade for both the building and the retaining wall, would your client be willing to submit a or site contractor for your client be willing to submit a statement of excavation at the time of submission for building permits, signed and sealed by a structural engineer license?
Absolutely, yes.
Identifying how they plan to go about doing this without undermining the neighbor's foundations.
Yes, I think that I think that could certainly be put together and I don't I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
All right. Question number two. Item number five, site plan, Roman numeral nine and page four of the report. Applicant shall identify the location that mentions for any proposed loading areas that are to be provided to serve the twenty-five proposed dwelling units in order for the engineering department to determine compliance with section forty-one, column eight dash six dash one, one of the city code. If no loading areas are being proposed, the applicant shall provide testimony to the board stating so. And she'll also provide an explanation as to why not. Do you know if any there's gonna be any proposed loading zones?
There there are no loading zones, excuse me, there are no loading zones proposed. Um loading for move in and move out would be on at the curbside on on First Street. And and it and we would require then a waiver or variance for that require for that requirement.
Well, the only concern I have with loading zone on First Street is that there's a bike lane there, so that might be a problem.
The only would only be, I I I loading and unloading should only be on New Street, excuse me. That's where the residential entrance is.
All right, so it'll be on New Street.
Yeah.
All right. Last question. Item number eight, hold on. Item number eight. Lighting, page seven, Roman numeral three. Lighting plan indicates illumination levels in excess of one foot candles across the west property line of the subject site next to a residential use. This requires a design waiver variance from section forty-one, column sixteen, six dash two, two A of the city code. Applicant notes a request for a design waiver variance from the same section of the code and indicates a proposed maximum of three foot candles. Applicant shall provide testimony to the board as to whether or not they are referring to the same area on the lighting plant that is being referenced above. Do you know that's what we're talking about on your lighting?
Yes, I know. I know what you're talking about. There there is a there is a a a spot of three-foot candles at the curb at the property line along New Street.
Line in the right-of-way?
In the right, it's in the right-of-way. At the at the uh at the property line, it's actually point five. So I think the the light, we should we should re- we should relook at the lighting plan because if the light fixtures were at the proper height in that alley, we shouldn't have had that half-foot candle or point-four-foot candle spillage in front of that neighbor's uh entrance.
Well, I might be able to help.
Probably have more. They probably have more anyway because they have their own light there, but they shouldn't be getting ours, so.
That's true, that's true. But if it's in the public right-of-way, the engineering department believes that section of the city code doesn't apply. It's really our understanding and it applies to common property lines with adjoining lots. So if you're telling me three-foot candles occurs at the curb line in the public right-of-way.
That's all, that's only where it occurs. If you look at that plan, you'll see it's three-point-five at the curb. And by the time you get back to the uh the property line across the sidewalk, it's down to point five. And that's primarily because of existing uh existing street lighting more than the wall lights, yeah.
Well, it's nothing more so prominent exists than what they're proposing.
Correct, correct.
If that is the case, the homeowner engineering does not object to the grant of this design waiver variance provided as a condition of approval. The applicant agrees to address any and all complaints from adjoining property owners regarding excessive light intensity, light glare for a minimum period of twelve months from the date of issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the entire proposed building. Applicant shall also agree to address any complaint for excessive light intensity, light glare to the satisfaction of which any adjoining property owner or their tenant. Okay, applicant shall also clearly identify where in the lighting plan the maximum illumination level three foot candles at the parking line takes place. Of those, all those things I just read, acceptable to your client?
Yes, those are those are all acceptable.
Complaints, glare, excessive light. All right. No further questions. Otherwise, you can comply with everything else in this report?
Yes.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trav contact.
If I may, here now I'd like to call the architect, Ms.
Architects one in, Mr. Beck.
Hello, everyone.
Mr. Beck, you're on mute.
Yeah, there we go. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give is truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Sure, um Cara Constantino, I'm an associate at uh Inglaze Architecture and Engineering and I'm the project architect that worked uh with NJCRI to uh get this building designed. So Jack went through a good amount, but let me share.
Well, Ms. Constantino, before you begin your testimony, can you give the board the benefit of your educational background, licenses that you hold and whether or not your licenses are current?
Absolutely, I'm an architect licensed in the state of New Jersey. Um license is current and in good standing.
And you graduated from which university?
Uh NJIT.
Good, good move, good, good. Because Constantino accepted as an expert, Mr. Chair.
Yes, she is.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Ms. Constantino, if you could, please give the board the architectural elements of this project.
Sure. You know, can you see my screen?
No.
How about now?
We can see it now.
Okay, great. So Jack gave a a good deal of background here. Um but a- as he had stated, um we're in the C two zone, which permits us to have um a a mixed use of residential above ground floor commercial. So um I'll dive right into uh the the plans and and sort of further move on into our unit count and layout, um as well as the the exterior aesthetic of the building. Um so our ground floor, um you know, you can see this more elaborated uh floor plan uh from from the civil drawings. We've got the sort of corner component um that would be the multipurpose space operated by NJCRI, um offering some social services offices uh as well as a Um offering some social services offices, uh as well as a sort of flexible space where meetings could take place with residents. But you know, all on its own, accessible via the main residential entry off of New Street as well as its own. Um independent entry off of first. Also on the ground floor is really residential amenities, including a a community room dedicated to. Uh the use of the residents for recreational purposes, um a communal laundry room, bike room and package room. Um you know, some of your traditional amenities, as well as your service spaces, your meter rooms and and utility spaces. Um storage and a trash room here, sort of at the core of the building, which you'll see as we go up. Um you know, the intention is to have a trash trash room with a trash chute on each floor of the building. Um and trash to be easily uh moved to the the street frontage on on trash day by building management as as needed. In addition, on the ground floor, um sort of off of our little alley space adjacent to our neighbor. Um we've got some overflow uh exterior bike parking, um just to make sure we provide an ample amount of bicycle storage. Moving up to the second floor, this is a unique floor. You know, in relation to the rest of the building layout, we've got four studio units on this floor and then three one bedrooms. Um whereas the typical uh floor plan, which I'll move along to next, um has a bit of a different unit mix. But as I mentioned prior, um a trash room sort of at the core of the the floor plate. Um two stairwells to um ensure appropriate egress and an elevator sort of also at the central core of the building. Um a pretty efficient floor plate with just, you know, uh minimal corridor space wasted and the rest given to the units. Uh the third through fifth floor, as I mentioned before, there are two studios. Um and four one bedroom unit types on uh the typical floor plate. Um so this, you know, adds up to our twenty five unit total. Um and I can just quickly flip over to the the unit plans themselves to get a better um idea of what we have going on. And I do apologize for the background noise. The typical studio typology um is four hundred square feet. And the layout is relatively uh straightforward with, you know, sort of minimum encumbrances and ADA. Uh bathroom layout, uh sort of straight run kitchen, uh sleeping alcove rather than, you know, any sort of enclosed room. And then a nice open living space. Um this is like the most narrow unit typology. And then the the next one bedroom, the first type of one bedroom unit is five hundred and twenty five square feet. There's a a bedroom when you first walk into the unit and this is sort of in in a unique place where you're going to get. Your window for this bedroom on like the back wall in this case, um whereas the others are, you know, street facing windows. This is actually on the the wall facing the little um alleyway. Um but it works to get, you know, natural light and air and and have a sort of private bedroom layout and um a bit of a bigger unit here. Uh five hundred and twenty five square feet, um but still pretty compact and efficient. Um that's sort of the the name of the game here with our proposed resident population. Um and then we have two one bedroom units that are relatively similar, um only slightly different in that this one cuts back a little. Just because of the the way that the floor plan shakes out. Um but you can see it's, you know, essentially two modules side by side. Um the first of which is about five hundred and eighty five square feet and the other six hundred and forty four. And I think, you know, it was mentioned by Kevin, but we have a a very like distinct and targeted resident population here. This will be all affordable, but um these are intended to be LGBTQ youth. And you know, potentially uh thi- this living opportunity is uh giving them the opportunity to avoid homelessness. And have a safe and healthy place to live, uh but it's it's also not giving them an amount of square footage that's daunting. Um it's an appropriately uh designed, or we we think um first place to live. Um for for folks who may have never had this opportunity before. So I think that speaks to some of the efficiency with the unit design. And I will just move forward here quickly to the elevations. We're looking at a mix of uh fiber cement and brick, really. Uh brick at the ground floor, we've got a sort of raised ground floor story. Um you know, a bit taller than our typical floor, ten ten feet as opposed to um to the standard nine foot. Um and just, you know, working with the zoning to create this raised ground floor story. Um we were thinking it would be best to anchor the building um to the street level with a nice brick. And then moving forward from there, um work with some some fiber cement and sort of a more like urban palette. That says I'm a residential building, but also ties in with this more commercial district that it's in. So we've got um sort of this gray blue and and a darker brick tone and nice fiberglass windows. Um with a mix of of fixed and operable windows to achieve our requisite requirements for the units. Jack did mention the transparency, which it's a little tough. I mean, you can see, I guess, our our west side elevation, which would be the uh the elevation facing our um residential neighbor. Tends to be the the worst, where we're definitely not going to be able to achieve the the transparency requirements. Um just simply based on our relationship to the the lot lines and and just what's happening in the building. Um but for the for the most part, the other elevations um have provided, you know, ample windows that are, you know, generous. And uh not looking like too small of punched openings um along the facade. So that's sort of the the bulk of it.
You want to pop back to the first image with the the perspective?
Oh, yes, yeah, and I actually, I have that here. I just have it, it's the same thing that's on our first page, but this is the the rendering, just a, you know, sort of quick street rendering.
Thank you, Ms. Constantino. I the the board have any questions?
Commissioners.
With Mr. Chair, if none of the commissioners do, I have one quick question.
Mr. Barry, go ahead, yes.
Thank you. Uh yes, still under oath. Just a very simple question. It was this rendering part of the submitted package or is this prepared for this evening?
This rendering, uh Mr. Barry, was it's included on the first sheet, it's just kind of small, so I just have it, it's this exact same. Yeah.
Gotcha, thank you. I thought it looked familiar, but I didn't remember seeing the full picture.
Yeah, it wasn't blown up on its own sheet, so I just figured might be easier to see.
Got it, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Coach here with you.
Thank you, Chair. Um if someone could share the criteria perhaps for identifying the twenty five. LGBT. Um LGBTQIA young people, because you said youth, right? So I'm wondering if they would be young people who are already involved with NJCRI or involved. Aging out of foster care, like what are the parameters? Who are the twenty five um young people who would be blessed, right?
I would think that it would be Mr. Taylor that would be able to respond to that question.
And thank you for your question, Vice Chair, Richard. And so, yes, there are young people who are involved at our two drop in centers that are downtown. Young people who are a part of programs in uh the Newark community. We we found that there's a lot of homelessness in our young adult, youth and young adult community that are actually couch surfing on college campuses. And so we're looking for a a population of people who might be working, who might be in school. And who are already preparing to be a little more stable. And so, working with the county's coordinated entry, we can make sure that we're getting the best young adult candidates. Who are prepared to utilize this really dynamic opportunity to move forward into their first space.
Thank you so very much.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jane.
And and counsel, this is um one hundred percent financed by the city or is this through grants? Um what's the financing behind this?
Uh again, I would defer to Mr. Taylor because he's involved with the business end of this application.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Commissioner, uh the Making Housing Homes uh award from the city came with three hundred thousand dollars. Uh from the home grant. We are also working with the state on some grant opportunities. As I said in my presentation, we uh have we lucked upon timing wise a project with the HUD. Uh called COC Builds that is going to uh hopefully be a huge component in a a few million dollars toward it. So we're looking at the end result of between the uh between county, between state and federal. Between what gets absorbed by the buffer from the uh the twenty five project based uh vouchers. That at eleven million dollar project might only have a million point seven um mortgage. And then I my other arm is fundraising, so we're looking to be able to go to the community to absorb some of that as well.
Okay, no, that that's that was kind of what I was getting to, wasn't sure if you had a partnership with Newark Housing Authority in terms of, you know, vouchers and.
We have already gone through them earlier in twenty twenty four and had those twenty five vouchers awarded.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question.
Board, any other questions or comments? See, and does that complete your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it does, thank you.
Now, Secretary, any persons from the public wishing to speak?
None, none, and his raise.
Who's hand?
Miss Juma's.
Okay, let's get Ms. Juma sworn in, Mr. Beck.
Good evening, um board and Mr. Chair, I just have two questions to Mr. Taylor. He answered most of it um by answering your questions, but I'll clarify. On the ground floor, you show a space labeled offices for NJCRI. And I was just curious if the services provided were restricted to the tenants or is it open to the public? And if it's open to the public, how do they solicit their clients?
So in that particular layer, I mean, thank you for the question, ma'am. Then that particular layout, we're also dealing with the population that is working. So those offices might be rotating, this is space for someone to have a meeting with a case manager. That doesn't make it feel like they're going into their apartment doing inspection, so they would have a proper place to have a proper meeting. Uh because most of the services are directly across, literally directly across the street in NJCRI's headquarters, which is essentially. A hundred steps from this building, so there would be no need to do their formal services in the space. But if they needed to meet with one of the council, they needed to meet with their uh their case manager, they would have a formal space to do that. So we didn't feel like they had to take them into their apartment and and kind of take away the sanctity of that space. Any any outside clients would be able to go to headquarters at three ninety three Central Avenue, which is uh to the rear of this building. If you will, where the hand is, we are just across the street.
And I can I I I might want to add to that, that the the way this space was designed. Uh was so that it could function um with its own entrance. So that while a person could come from the apartments into this space. It's not ne- it's it's not necessary and it and i- if if in fact some uh uh some NJCRI. Services may need to be done in these offices for someone who doesn't live in the building. That can happen without sacrificing the security of the apartment building.
John Barry, Board Planner, can you um give your opinion on whether or not that would be considered mixed use? Or if this service is mostly restricted to the tenants?
So we discussed, uh John Barry, Board Planner, still under oath. Um when we when we met with the applicant's team at the technical review meeting a couple of months ago. We discussed the use of that space and it was described as space that would be available for. The community that's served by the the organization here. So it would be for the members of the the residents of the building, it would also be for service providers to use. And there may be some back and forth with the um facility across the street. Now, at at the time that we discussed that, it seemed to me to fit the definition of of community space that makes it all under a mixed use project. Um for the zoning purposes, um and I think what we've heard this evening is is relatively consistent with that. So I don't I don't know that I changed my mind. I think, you know, it's not a commercial space, obviously, but it is a a community centric space that is that is serving. The population in the area um as part of its function.
Um, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
You put your question.
Commissioner Purdy. Commissioner Purdy?
It wasn't me.
Oh, okay.
Chair Richardson, if I may, um I know they blew up the rendering, but if we convert that as exhibit A one and provide just the rendering of itself.
No objection, Ms. Ms. Person.
Can you stop sta- sharing your screen as well? So no other questions from the board or professionals? Are there any questions from the public?
Yes, we have a couple of questions, Chair. Comments.
Pardon me?
Comments, I should say.
Okay.
Sashi, if you could accept the invite?
Okay.
Ms. Sashi, if you could just come off of me and turn your camera on if possible, so you can be sworn in.
Hello, I'm not a panelist, I'm with NJCRI.
Yes.
Did you, oh. I didn't have a question.
Okay.
We do have one.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
They do have their hand, I'm just gonna allow them to talk because they're via telephone. Um if your phone number ends in eight, six, four?
Yes.
Mr. Beck, they're on.
Salm, you swear the testimony about to give to this board should be truthful?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Antonio Cruz, I live at four oh four New Street, North New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, you have three minutes to speak, so.
I have some questions for the architect. I'd like to find out how many windows will be on this project.
You can say all your questions.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to discuss that the uh first street corridor is a major corridor for University Hospital. And from two eighty all the way to the hospital, there are ambulances that travel on that area. I live there, I hear them every day, every so often. They do not stop their silence. So that is why I want to ask about the windows, because they need to have some soundproofing. And standard windows are not going to be enough to keep the noise down. Also, there is a fast food restaurant called Wendy's, there's a fast food restaurant called Checkers right across the street. I hear the dumpsters every day dumping checkers, three type of garbage, cardboard, trash and grease. I hear the dumpster at Wendy's, I also hear McDonald's. The operations for this fast food restaurant are very late. Three o'clock for Checkers, two o'clock for Wendy's, twenty four hours for McDonald's. How are you going to have a residence for twenty five individuals or more at that busy intersection? During the day, also the traffic that's there causes a lot of accidents because there's no traffic control signal on New Street and First Street. Because it's absurd to have that traffic symbol signal there, but I see accidents. Last uh on the thirty first, I saw an accident on Central Avenue and West Market, and that's a controlled area. That's six lanes of traffic in front of First Street. So the pedestrians are going to be really having a problem on any of those streets, cars are going to have a be a problem. And no one talks about parking inside the facility, where are the people going to park their cars? If they park on New Street, you have you have Wendy's that has an entrance on New Street. That sometimes in the summer, it backs up their drive through. You need to look at that by staying there one night or one day. So I also want to discuss Mr. Taylor, that I'm not aware if he knows the neighborhood. If it's a very safe neighborhood for the type of individuals that he wants there. I live there. I've been mugged, my sister-in-law has been carjacked, a homeless guy sleeps in my car, my battery has been stolen. My car rims have been stolen and I live two hundred feet from where your project is. I still deal with it. And I live two hundred feet from where your project is. I still deal with it today. And I had noticed the other day calling the police because a homeless guy broke my window and he decided to sleep in my car because it's ten to twenty degrees at night. Why doesn't this uh community move to another area that might be more safer for these type of individuals? That will be more appealing. Also, the Mr. Taylor needs to wear that behind his facility on Dickerson Street and Sussex Avenue, that homeless shelter is not helping out the homeless. They're out there drinking and drugging when I go supermarket shopping, walking distance. And also on West Market by Second Street, which is only a little bit of a footage away, there's people out there that have biases towards certain people, like myself. I'm different. I am I I am different by color, okay? So I hear them call me names. I've also heard them call people other homosexual names, which not my concern, but it's it's prevalent. So Mr. Taylor needs to work about maybe moving this project to another area. And the zoning board needs to worry about the traffic as well as soundproofing for the windows, which are going to not be good for the dumpsters. And also, I have no no knowledge. Are you going to have trash that the city in Newark is going to pick up or are you going to have a private hauler? That means you're going to have an additional dumpster somewhere where you're going to have potential rats. Wendy's has rats, Checkers has rats, my property has rats, the Dallas has rats. So these are things that you need to worry about for the residents. It's not going to be for a resident because that's a commercial area. It shouldn't be a residential area. Because it's not safe.
That's that that's your time, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your concerns. Thank you for voicing them and putting them on the record.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Byers.
Yeah, uh, just to uh give me a little advice to the gentleman. We appreciate the uh coming and the thanks for the community. It doesn't matter what building, where that we build, or we always going to see things going around. Okay, that area, I raised in that area. And I understand that parking is a little different, but uh uh Central Avenue, you can park anywhere. And there is a lot of parking in Central Avenue. However, uh a community uh where you're going to see people jogging, whatever, first of all, that's everywhere. But I do believe that if we have a ten association or a a community engagement there, like I did in this, I still am crying. Not out of shame to say. This was the worst community to live out there. But if somebody come out there, do community leader, being up there for the community, knock on door and 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 get the kid out of the uh the street, I believe that we the one who can make the community, not the street. We the one with the tenant, we the one who had to make the community uh be right. Okay, so just 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 to say that, my chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, and I'm sorry, um, Madam Secretary, anybody else from the public wishing to speak?
Um, seeing none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
Move it.
Move by Commissioner Purdy. Second by Commissioner Byers, roll call.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah, I don't know why the chair never hears me. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Byers?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Simmons? I think he might be frozen. I'll come back. Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons, can you hear me now? Commissioner Scott Roundtree? Commissioner Simmons, just give us a thumbs up. I don't I think there's something wrong with the audio.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Scott Roundtree? Commissioner Scott Roundtree? Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Co-chair Witcher?
Yes.
Chair Richardson.
Yes, the application has been approved. Good luck, so.
I give my to chair members of the board, have a great evening.
Join going forward.
Thank you very much.
Just gonna call on you.
Have a good evening.
All right. Okay, what do we have next? Oh, we have minutes from December sixteenth. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes. Any questions, comments, corrections?
Yeah, one small correction.
Sure, co-chair with you.
Just, uh, Carissa, I mean, Secretary Madam Secretary.
Yes.
See, I'm too relaxed at home. Look in, look inside item six and seven and make sure that our Martian was last name is spelled correctly.
Okay, so we won't um memorialize them. I'll make that correction and add it to the next agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Beck, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We have a number of resolutions uh to be memorialized this evening. Uh, first off is from December ninth. We have C P B twenty-four dash eighty-nine, which is ten dash twelve Speedway Avenue. Carissa, we also have from the ninth, which I meant to send over, but the the meeting started, is C P B twenty-four dash seventy one twenty-seven dash one thirty-one Verona Avenue. Those two resolutions are uh to be memorialized this evening from December ninth. From December sixteenth, C P B twenty dash seventy, that's an extension. C P B twenty-two dash seventy-three, another extension. C P B twenty-four thirty-three, that's two sixty-six South Tenth Street. C P B twenty-four sixty-one, that's one forty-six dash one forty-eight Seymour Avenue. C P B twenty-four dash seventy-three, that's fifty-eight dash one oh eight Frontage Road. And from this evening, we had a courtesy review, uh, January thirteenth. C P B twenty-four dash one ten, that was one thirty-five, one forty-nine dash one fifty-seven Summon Street. Uh, that was a courtesy review. Uh, those are all the uh resolutions uh from the meetings that need to be memorialized. All those who voted affirmatively and are permitted to do same, if they have any objections, please state them now or the record will reflect that they are all memorialized.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mr. Beck. We got one other uh piece of business and
Yes, this
This time I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Beck.
Yes, um, we also have one other resolution. It's the renewal of the legal contract with uh my firm. Uh, it's under the same terms and conditions as the last two years. And that would be from the term of January first to December thirty-first of this year. Uh, all those members in favor? Uh, does anyone oppose? Please state that on the record.
So everybody say aye.
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 Thank you. And at this time, we're going to do the reorganization of the board. And there are two positions, correct, Madam Secretary, Board Chair and
Board Chair.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair and also you, Mr. Beck.
Oh, okay, well, did I? So we'll move on to the reorganization of the board. Um.
The only thing with you, Mr. Beck, we still have to do a vote for you.
Okay, I guess you can do the the roll call. Okay.
So everybody's in agreeance that we are keeping Mr. Beck as Council of the Central Planning Board?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Byers?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree? We have an absentee. Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Co-chair Witcher?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I much appreciate it.
Back.
Uh, at this time, uh, I'll open the floor for uh uh members to nominate a chair.
I'd like to nominate Wayne Richardson as Chair of the Central Planning Board.
Thank you.
Second.
Are there any other
Commissioner, was that Commissioner Jordan?
You know, she was like, she was gonna say no.
Do we have that as Commissioner Jordan second?
Yes, okay.
I thought that was Timmons. That was Timmons who said.
Second, second. Thank you.
To me.
I'd like to say do not change as a vice chair there because I love her.
Okay. So we do a roll call?
Nominations?
There are no other nominations, Mr. Beck.
Seeing no other nominations, at this time, uh, we can have an affirmative vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let it reflect that uh Mr. Chair, Mr. Richardson is uh nominated and elected as Chair of the Board unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. I I I appreciate that. Uh, thank you for your support.
All right.
You're very welcome, Mr. Chair.
So
Thank you for your
Uh, so the next position that's open is the Vice Chair. And I would like to nominate Vice Chair, uh, Witcher.
Second. Third.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. Uh, are there any other nominations? See, now nominations are closed. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Byers?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Absolutely.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Co-chair Witcher? Oh, you cannot vote. I'm sorry, Chair Richardson.
Yes.
So move, welcome back, co-chair.
Thank you all, even though I was a little too relaxed today. Should have not been taking my uh shoes off, but I appreciate it.
Don't take your shoes off, your feet might hurt. All right, so thanks, everyone. I really do appreciate your your confidence in me and uh being the board chair. Lets me know that, you know, your your support. Yeah, I do not take it for granted. I really appreciate it. And, you know, I have the best co-chair on the planet.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
For the evening, um, pardon the interruption, Chair, were you were you done?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, Happy New Year, everyone. This was your first meeting of the year. It's nice to see a full board present. Um, but for the new members or the members who haven't already taken the um the required course for members, there is one coming up with records. Um, I'm looking at their website. It says it begins late February, February twenty-seven. And they're all online, virtual, so. Um, if you haven't already taken the course, it's coming up very, very, very soon, so can visit their website to register.
Miss Juma, is it one day?
Uh, it's
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, one day. And I think it is, this is a very long class. Um, they, I think they break it up into two sessions.
Do we know who on the board? I know Miss Austin probably needs to take it. Is there anyone else that you know of who needs to take it?
Uh, well, you're all here. If you haven't, say aye, but um to my knowledge, Miss Austin would be the only person.
Okay.
It's the bias. You've taken the course, correct?
I take it one time. I just missed it by one. I don't know if I need it because about three years ago, I took it on record when I was a commissioner for House and Authority, which I believe is the same thing. I had to find certificate.
Well, you can always contact the office. We'll double check for you.
I did try it last year. They told me that they don't think I need it for the fact that I did it already. I mean, I did it for the planning board and I missed it by one, but I had it uh ninety-seven percent of the one that I took for the House and Authority, which I believe is the same, is the same commissioner.
Just, uh, Commissioner, just make sure that make sure through through the office with um Miss June with that um you're up to date.
Not a problem. If you have to take it, I have no problem. And I'm a uh Madam Secretary, if you please give me a call when you have a chance.
Tomorrow morning. Yes, yes, sir.
You can do it tonight, too. I'm not going to sleep.
Okay, so the next meeting is January twenty-seventh. Stay safe, everyone. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night. Stay safe.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.